Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion here to reopen the continued public hearing on the zoning bylaw amendment MBTA. To amend, yada, yada, dot, dot, dot. And that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second discussion. Roll call vote, Mr. Boasie.
Aye.
Mr. English.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Mr. Maloney.
Aye.
Mr. Orbin.
Aye.
The Wood.
Aye.
Aye, seven in favor and no one opposed, motion carries. Um, I think it would be good if I could impose on Vice Chair Gallo and not official maybe, or I don't know how that works in this meeting, but you. You've got some good updates from the select board meeting, you and Vice Chair. Uh, Select Board Member Rouse from the other night and talking to the town attorney, I thought it'd be good if we could get an update from that. If you haven't seen that. That piece of the meeting, I think it was a really good update from the town attorney on what's coming as the litigation moves forward. If I could impose on you, Mr. Gallo, Vice Chair Gallo. To, to help us with that, that'd be great.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. A pleasure to be here, everybody. And again, really appreciate all the hard work. That you and this board has done regarding the MBTA communities zoning bylaw. We know we've spent countless hours and meetings on this. Um, and you know, uh, you know, listen, it's no, it's no stretch or it's no, I think it's, I think we can all agree that this is a passionate topic. There's, there's many different passionate views on both sides. Um, and you know, I'm sure you got, you guys do the same or you get the same when I'm, you know, walking around town. Uh, people come up to me and ask me different things. They say different things to me. I get emails, I get phone calls regarding the MBTA communities. And especially regarding our legal challenge, regarding the unfunded mandate determination from the auditor. And you know, in this day and age where there's just a lot of people posting a lot of opinions on Facebook. And we, I, I personally don't, I, I try not to be on Facebook as little as possible. Um. I do it for business, but I try not to be on for town stuff unless I'm just posting agendas and whatnot. But there's a lot of stuff on there and there's a lot of opinions. And a lot of that stuff gets forwarded to us and people are asking us to validate that, you know, opine on that. And you know, we thought it would be prudent last night and ironically it was April Fools, but at our meeting last night, we had our town attorney. Uh, Jay Tullerman on our town council, um, who's leading the charge with the legal challenge. And he's also hearing some things that he classified as, you know, um, you know, just kind of not necessarily accurate in his opinion. And he gave a really good, high level summary, uh, Mr. Chair and the board of our case. Why we are in this position, what our intentions are, what we hope to get out of it. And I can't stress enough. That, um, you should, uh, and I forwarded this email to Mike. I don't know if he's had a chance to forward it to the rest of the board members. But I highly recommend you check out last night's meeting of the select board and you start at minute 57. At minute 57 is when our town council takes over and kind of gives us his opinion on the case. So. He made a couple of interesting points that I want to just share with you high level. Um, and the first one being is that in his opinion, there, there, there's a big. Uh, misinterpretation of what we're trying to accomplish with the case. So I'm going to try to unpack that a little bit. Uh, our case is not questioning the validity of the MBTA zoning bylaw because as we all know, the SJC ruled in favor of it. Uh, our case, however, is based on the unfunded mandate determination that was done by the state auditor. At the request of Rentham and a few other communities. Uh, and what is, what the, what the state auditor is saying. Uh, per, per letter and per follow-up conversations with our town council is saying that the state needs to provide fiscal impact analysis. Small business impact analysis and then fund us based on that delta of the determination for all costs, both technical. And actual. So technical such as the zoning costs, right? That some people have referred to, uh, the $40,000 grant that we got, but not just that. The actual costs, uh, the impacts to the community, the additional police, the additional firefighters, the additional DPW employees, the additional teachers. That 750 units would impose if zoned and built. That is the crux of our case. Point number one. Okay? Uh, the next point that Attorney Tallman wanted to kind of shed his opinion on is this whole notion of the unfunded mandate determination. It's very clear that our attorney spoke to the state auditor. We have a state auditor's letter in hand. And we followed back up with the state auditor to clarify her letter. That the whole impact, including the increased levels, as I've recently just said, to PDFD schools, DPW, et cetera. As well as infrastructure are included in the unfunded mandate determination, not just the soft cost of zoning. And the technical assistance. That's one of the biggest flaws I've seen and mistakes that I've seen people make regarding this case. Now, I'm not, I'm giving, I agree with him, but that's his opinion. Obviously this has to be, you know, uh, uh, tried in court, right? Um, and we'll get to the, we'll get to the court proceeding today and some very interesting questions that the Judge Gilde actually posed. I'll get to that in a second. Um, the next case that he thinks that was a, a, a clarification was needed is the Milton case, right? We all know that the Milton, Milton quote unquote lost, and I say that in parentheses. Um, but. Our attorney believes there's a lot of misinformation regarding the Milton lost or got crushed. Uh, he says actually no way. Because of the Milton case, the SJC ruled that the state had to provide guidelines, not recommendations. On how they, how we needed to move forward. And those guidelines set up Rentham's case. And helped it be much stronger. Uh, and they also directed the state a direct. Ruling from the SJC directed the state to give us the fiscal and small business impact statements. That they have not yet provided, which we continue to ask for. Now, I did have someone email me something saying that someone in the, in the, um. In the, uh, uh, community said that the state did issue a letter of no impact. Our attorney thinks that letter isn't worth the paper it's written on. How can a zoning mandate that's going to increase 750 units have zero impact? So that, my friends, our attorney believes is complete BS. And they're fighting that very point. They fought it today in court. Um, so it's another big misconception that people have been discussing. Another misconception that he brought to light was this whole idea of a special master. I've heard people say that if we don't zone this in, the state can heavy-handedly step in, appoint a special master, put the zoning wherever they want. Again, complete not true in our attorney's opinion. That's never happened before. And the state would have a very difficult time doing that. And our attorney points out that we would have multiple opportunities. To push back, fight that and appeal. So he thinks there's little to no chance of them appointing a state, a, 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 a special master. And I, I, I know that people have been saying that, that, that is a huge possibility if we don't, uh, vote this in. Um, the next thing that, um, he thought was very interesting was the cost. We've heard people say to us that this litigation is a waste of taxpayer dollars. It's a huge cost. It's going to eat up a lot of money. We're going to spend hundreds, thousands of dollars. Once again, huge misconception couldn't be further from the truth. Uh, we are sharing the costs with four other, um. Municipalities. So we are getting huge discounts on this, on, on this, on, on the legal representation. Furthermore. At this point, we're not in trial. Okay? All we're doing is filing motions. And I learned last night that attorneys can't double dip. So if our attorney files a motion on behalf of Rentham. He then can't double charge or triple charge or quadruple charge the other municipalities for filing the same motion on their behalf. So we get economies of scale for that. So I, I just want to make sure that people understand, we're not talking about. Even tens of thousands of dollars at this point in legal bills. So that's a huge misconception, once again, that people are seeing on Facebook and other areas that our attorney thought is very important to bring to light and talk about. Um, also regarding the, the hearing today, I don't know if you guys were aware of this, but we actually did have the hearing today. Uh, and, uh, we are told, I'm going to read you an email that I was told that, well, I can't read the, the, the exact verbiage because of privilege, but what I can say to you is. In the hearing today, Judge Gilde asked two important questions in particular. That the Commonwealth's attorney struggled to answer and in our opinion, tried to deflect. Question number one, Judge Gilde asked their counsel, would you agree that increasing housing stock would result in a fiscal impact on municipalities? Let that question sink in for a second. Okay? The second question Judge Gilde asked. How did the EOHLC Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities get to a net zero figure for no fiscal impact on the public sector? Once again, attorneys stumbled to answer that, that question. So. I just thought it was very prudent and I'm, I'm, I'm probably not doing service. The, the level of update that Attorney Tallman gave us last night. So I can't stress this enough. Please go to the select board meeting from last night. It starts at minute 57. I think Jay does a fantastic job of summarizing our case. Bringing up a lot of these misconceptions that he feels are just that misconceptions and puts the truths. Uh, out there. So the taxpayers, the voters, the planning board, select board, all the boards and commissions. Can see what his perspective is and why he thinks Rentham has a very strong case. Uh, with that being said, I would like to ask a select woman Rouse, uh, to opine. And I, I checked with Mike Michelle. Because it's two of us on here, we're, we're no danger of any open meeting law violation or what have you. So please feel free to chime in as needed. Because I probably screwed up most of what I tried to say.
No, I think you did a great job summarizing. And Jay does a great job really going through everything. Um, last night in our meeting, very clear, concise, explaining all aspects of it. So, uh, you know. I'll reinforce that watching that would be very helpful for anyone.
And I, I also reinforce to, to, you know, to anyone watching this, uh, you know, this meeting later. Um, you know, or, or when you're talking to constituents, I tell everyone, Facebook is great. Social media is great. There's a lot of opinions on social media. Don't let that be your main source of news. I always recommend going to the source and finding out what that particular board, what that particular attorney, town manager. You know, thinks about that situation because that's how a lot of misinformation gets out there. Um, so anyway, that's the, the brief update that I thought was important, prudent that I want to share with your board. Uh, Chairman McKnight, if anyone has any questions for me, I'll obviously do the best I can to answer them, uh, but I'm not an attorney and. You know, I, I, I'll give you my opinion.
Thank you so much. Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, I have a question. Um, anyway. This board has been laboring under the belief that regardless of the validity of the law or not. Our job is to identify. Should the town decide to implement this, where in town is the best place for it? So I'm not going to ask what the select board thinks because I know you're not, you know, you're not in meeting or whatever. But are we, are we laboring under, I mean, it's our understanding that that's our, our job to do under the law. And are we missing anything there is my question?
No, that is your job and you're doing, and you're doing a diligent job of it. Your job is to identify. The parcels that the, that the planning board believes, uh, represent, I, I always hear Chairman McKnight talk about. The, um, the, the, um, the parameters, the guiding principles, I think you called them, of how you selected your parcels. Your job is to do, do exactly what you're doing. Identify the parcel or parcels that your board believes is going to best suit the townspeople. Should we have to bring this to town meeting, zone it in and in fact build this someday?
Great. Uh, I think that's what we've all believed and I think that's why we've been diligent in, in pursuing. It in the way we have and we've done the best we can. Not wanting to speak for all the other board members, but as far as all the conversations I've had. Uh, that, that's why we pursued it in the way that we have. And. There may have been some feedback from the public that we hadn't heard until after the last vote, but, um. You know, I, 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 I just want to state at our meeting that, that, that that's the mandate that we've been operating under. Not some mandate that we have to agree with the law and convince the town to abide by it, et cetera, or whatever. Um, so I just wanted to get clear about our role and make sure that from the perspective of. The attorney, your understanding, uh, Vice Chairman and Select Board Member Rouse. Um, that, that, you know, we're, we're laboring under a correct assumption. So that we're not doing something that, you know, thinking our motivation is something that maybe it ought to be something different. And so thank you for that verification. I appreciate it.
Just to further clarify, Mr. Lawrence, your board's doing exactly what it's supposed to and doing a fine job at that.
Thank you.
One, any other questions? Um, and we'll move on to a couple of things. Mr. Orbin.
This is going to be less of a question, but I'm more of a, of a comment, I guess, on, on some of the things that. Um, Mr. Gallo had mentioned. I just generally, as an attorney who's argued a lot of things in, in Superior Court, and I, I think we got a good. That's a good judge. I think Gilde is a good judge. And the very fact that he asked those questions, I think. You never know, you just never know when you're walking out of a hearing. I will be the first to admit that sometimes it goes exactly the opposite you think. But that's, that's a reasonably good sign because there's nothing worse than walking out of court when the judge is silent. Because you have no idea what he or she is thinking, no idea what he's doing. So just from my perspective, it doesn't mean it's going to go anywhere good or bad. It's a high standard on a preliminary injunction, but that's a good sign that he was asking those particularized questions. I just wanted to make that comment now while we. Why it was most recently brought up because I will tell you, no matter how good you think your case is, you go in there and the judge says nothing. It's the worst, most uncomfortable feeling, um, in the world when you just prattled on for 20 to 30 minutes and you get, you get no response. So I just wanted to throw out that, I think that's a good sign. In the end, you never know, but that's a really, I, I, it's encouraging is what I would leave it as.
Through, through you, Mr. Chair, if I can respond to.
Yeah, please.
And Mr. Orbin, I, I, let me clarify. By no means do we think that, you know, I agree with you. We don't, you know, we. This could go, we could lose the case, right? There's a, there's a, you know, a very plausible, plausible chip that we could lose the case. I'm just providing the update that we received. But to your point, we don't know if that's good or bad for us. We think that's, as you indicated, relatively interesting, favorable, those questions. But as you stated, the judge took it under advisement. He's going to rule, you know, at a later date. We don't know when. We think it's going to be soon. And we'll see if, you know, if, if, if our attorneys got, was right or, you know, what happens from here. But I appreciate that comment.
Thank you. Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I did watch, uh, Mr. Talman's presentation to the board last night. I thought he did a terrific job and I have no doubt. Uh, that he was, he was fully prepared today to make the point that the select board wanted to make. In fact. Mr. Gallo was kidding with Mr. Talman about, we're going to get you home and into bed so you'll be ready tomorrow. And he said, I'll be. I'll be ready under any circumstances. So it went quite well. So too, by the way, Chris did the budget presentation by Mr. King. It was really well done. Um, one, one thing, by the, one bit of news on this, Mr. Chairman, I know you want to move on to some of the other people here, but two weeks ago. The town of Lexington, in a nearly unanimous town meeting vote. Uh, reduced the number of potential units that could be built in their town under this law from 13,500. To 2,411. So they basically reduced it down to about 20% of the original potential allocation. They also reduced the, they cut the acreage in half. And the reason is that Lexington has been inundated with requests and now the people are realizing this is going to be too much for us to take. And so it's, uh, you know, it's not the same as the case that Mr. Gallo was describing today down in Plymouth, but it, it's sort of, um. It, it sort of shows that the wind is blowing, uh, in the same direction from Lexington as it is from these other towns. Thank you.
Tom, sorry, what was that number again that you said for Lexington?
Their original, um, the original overlay district would have allowed, according to the newspaper account, 13,500 units.
It seems like a lot.
That's a lot. It's only, they're only, they only for the MBTA, they are only originally 1,231.
So, so now they're down to 2,411 potential. No, 1,000, 1,000 is what they're, is what has already been submitted.
And that's all that they need to have according to the MBTA community's law and their requirements.
Yeah, so they went.
They must have just allowed more.
Yeah. And, uh, so anyway, but they're pulling back. The key thing is, and the vote was nearly unanimous in town meeting. And it was endorsed by the select board, uh, so that they, clearly they, they now see what the potential impact of, of this law could be.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Maloney. Um, two things while we have, uh, Vice Chair Gallo and Select Board Member. Rouse on and you're, you can stay on after these two comments or you can leave. Either way, we're moving into. Uh, what we've heard from the residents is, uh, concern about East Street. Uh, and some other optional sites that have been identified. I haven't heard those concerns about. Um, the other site, uh, but I, I wanted to reiterate because I had read to the board last meeting, the, uh, email that Mike, uh, King had sent out regarding. The timeline around meetings and to. Hold off submitting MBTA zoning article for June 2nd, um, because we're still waiting this information on the final. Financial impact analysis that we need before we can go back to the voters and that we can, we can pull a special meeting when we need to. So the timeline of the. Of the date that we thought was a, was a commitment date to have to the town and to the town meeting is not a pressure point. I just wanted to validate that that is still, still the case.
Yes, sir. That's still the case. Um, I think the, the, the message from Mike King, based on the conversation and directive from our meeting. Uh, and Select Woman Rouse, feel free to, to chime in as well was, um, you know, be ready. Uh, but there's no need to draft a warrant article at this time because nothing's changed. We, this, the, the townspeople very. You know, strongly voted this down at the last town meeting. They wanted, uh, a few things before we were going to bring this back to call a special meeting. Um, they wanted the unfunded mandate determination. They wanted the Milton case results, which we have, which led to the unfund determining, uh, unfund mandate determination. And they wanted the fiscal impact analysis, which we still don't have. So. It doesn't make sense for us to bring anything back to town meeting when there's been no change. Um, and that's the message that we're hearing loud and clear from the majority of the residents as well. So that, yeah, I, Chairman McKnight, I would agree with that statement and say that, um, that's accurate.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Um, what we'll do now is, um. Based on our last meeting, we've talked about, is there, are there other sites that we should consider? And as it relates to East Street, and we were going to start to dig into some of those to see if there are other sites. The other thing that we talked about is. Could we overlay this over 40B? Which I was in the impression we couldn't, but I heard that maybe we could. So maybe instead of East Street, which is a virgin piece of property. We could be doing something with that other parcel that would put it over something that's already developed that, you know, would be in an area that would already have some density. So. You're welcome to sit through the dialogue if you'd like. If not, uh, we, we're happy that you joined us tonight and gave us that update.
I'm going to, uh, personally, I'm going to hang on for a little bit. Uh, I gotta put my kids to bed in a little bit, but I can't stress this enough. Mike, thank you so much for your years of service. Planning Board, thank you for all your diligent, hard work. Rachel Benson, Town Planner, thank you for all your diligent, hard work. Our board looks forward to continuing to working together, uh, moving forward. Uh, and thank you, thank you for everything you guys do for our community. Uh, we really appreciate it. So thank you again.
Thank you, Vice Chair Gal. Thank you, uh, Select Board Member Michelle Rouse. Feel free to stay on and listen to this, uh, exciting.
Riveting conversation.
On, on other sites.
Never too much MBTA. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Rachel, so we had talked about, and, and I tell you, there's a lot of comment in, uh. Have, that we've gotten in the last couple of weeks. I've read through many of them. I'm not sure I've gotten through all of them, but I feel like the overwhelming majority of them talk about East Street. Um, I don't see a lot regarding Elysium Street. As a matter of fact, I've had conversations with some folks in town that feel that, that, that's. And, and a couple of developers that feel that that actually is a good site for us from a town perspective, based on where we located that one. Um, but East Street's another story and we've gotten a lot of feedback on that. And so I, I think we, we said last time, Rachel, maybe we could pull up a, you could develop a map. With the other sites we could consider and whether it's one site or a couple of smaller sites to get to that. What do we have to get to, uh, 20 acres? So it could be. Could be two fives, it could be four, uh, sorry, four fives, it could be two tens, it's, it could be some combination of that.
Jim has his hand raised.
Yes, Mr. Lawrence.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, you alluded to something that I was unclear about as well. And I was trying to recall how we. Came to this. Uh, with, with regard to overlaying in a 40B. Um. And Mr. Maloney and I have been having some conversations trying to. Get to what we think is the truth of the matter here. So if you overlay a 40B, obviously these 40Bs are providing a lot of our affordable housing bill, housing. Which has brought us up to the 11% where we're at. So do we run the risk of losing that? Or does the fact that our bylaw says when you build something, you have to build 10%? Does that protect us if somebody comes in and says, well, we're going to, you know, wipe out this and replace it with that? Or are we, or, or are we potentially sacrificing something we've worked very hard to. Achieve, which is the status where the 40Bs don't actually get to come in and just tell us what they're going to do? Do you know the answer to that, uh, Rachel or Mike?
I don't, but Rachel.
So they are deed restrictions. And when all of this was first coming out, we didn't know until we asked the question. We asked the question, the answer came back. It doesn't affect the 40B status because that is a deed restriction. If they want to demolish those three, um, buildings over at 40 Ledgeview Way to build a whole new thing. I mean, I don't see the return on investment. I don't see that being a feasible idea to, to demolish 220 units. Just to build something new at 15 units per acre, if that's one of the locations that you choose.
To his point though, would we lose if they chose to do that?
Sure. Yes, you would. They wouldn't have a 40B there anymore.
Right.
But you'd have.
That does put it at risk.
You would have a 10% affordable on there. That, that project is only, it was built when I think 2018, 2019. I honestly don't think that's going to be demolished tomorrow.
How, how much of that is considered affordable housing? 10% or?
25%. 25%, 25%.
25%. So if we did.
You would lose 15%.
Replace that or Eagle Brook. I think of those as the two main 40Bs in town.
Hmm.
And somebody did find economic viability in.
I, I want to know, I want to hang with the people you hang out with, Jim.
Uh, the first word of all of these sentences is if. So if, if, if all that happened.
If money was no option.
In, in danger of taking, you know, a section of town that had, that had 25% of it.
Yep.
And, and running that down to 10. I mean, that seems to me like a guarantee of going to.
Okay.
Less than 10% townwide.
Yep. If it eases your mind, you're absolutely right. If somebody, if money was no option, yeah, somebody could come in and demo that whole thing, build a 15 units per acre by right. I'm going to say other communities have, are also doing and considering this and have gotten approved by the state.
Yeah. No, so that, that's fine. I just, I, I was trying to think, like, it seemed like a really good idea to me. And I was thinking, why wouldn't we have automatically done that? What argument might there have been? And that was the thing that stuck in my mind is maybe some of our reasoning for not doing that. Um, so I don't know if it, if it holds up under further scrutiny. I, I'm not even opining on any of that. I'm just kind of trying to understand how that would work before we start. Uh, looking at potentially doing that because the chairman brought it up as, you know, one possibility. Uh, so I am content with the conversation that just happened. I've got the information I was after. Thank you very much.
Would we stay with that for a minute? Do we know how many acres that is and how many units that are, there are and how many units per acre there are? And do. If we did this, what would, what would it take off of our remaining 20 we have to find if we don't do East Street?
Which one are you talking about?
Uh, Ledgeview.
Uh, Ledgeview is about, I think, 15 or 17 acres.
Where the residential component is?
Where the 40, um, Ledgeview Way is a 17 acre parcel.
17?
And it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter what the existing units are. There's, it's an overlay district. So your calculations, whatever you want to put it at, you could put it at 22 units per acre and do another one at eight units per acre to get the average. Because that's, it's already developed there.
And how many units are there? You said 200 and.
20.
220. It's already at thirteen units an acre. Is that?
Right, but, but there, the, the state isn't looking at what's there existing. You know?
No, I was.
If there's an existing development there, they're not gonna say, oh, no, it's, it has to be fifteen units per acre.
I understand, but.
Okay.
We get, we would potentially get, get credit. For thirteen units an acre on seventeen acres of land that's already built and developed as high density or higher density. Then we would have to go back and take three acres. At maybe a little bit more to get to that average if we wanted to put an overlay over that and complete the puzzle.
Hmm. Or you could pick another forty B across the street. Across Franklin Street. On Eagle Brook. Which is again, already developed.
And so.
Thing about Eagle Brook to me, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, to interrupt.
Please go ahead.
If we are gonna stick with Elysium Street, which I am wholeheartedly and with every fiber of my being in favor of doing. To put the other section right there across the street. Certainly does seem like a big, should it ever be built, does seem like a big burden on that area of town. I would have a hard time voting for all of it on that section of Route one forty, which is. Where a lot of people go, including myself, to get groceries, sometimes gas, et cetera, services that are there in, uh, you know, in Franklin. So just, just a, just a thought about Eagle Brook. Um. As, as we bring it up for consideration.
I'm sorry, maybe we could go down the list of board members to see what your thoughts are on that first. If the forty B option of overlay and whether Ledgeview is one of those things that. We think is, is not as much of a risk as, as we've kind of talked about early on here, but. I, to be honest with you, if, if it came up during the process, when we had the subcommittees and, and I even met with some, some state officials. Missed it, that we go over forty Bs. So I don't remember that. Maybe. Maybe that was my mistake. If I had heard that and I had really known that we could overlay over forty Bs, that would have been on the top of my chart of sites to be considering. So. Um. So I like the idea, but Mr. Boasi, your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm in, um, support of. Putting some, or who'd get twenty acres over Ledgeview, that would, uh, make a lot of sense to me. Seems like, um. It would be a very low impact place to have the, um. Overlay zone because likely nothing would ever change. Um, and Eagle Brook, I also support. That was sort of my number one option from the beginning. Um. But either way. Is fine with me. I, I think they both. Make a lot of sense, uh. I, I really don't have any, um, I think the town could get behind especially Ledgeview just because. The impact would be so low, nothing would really change with having. MBT community zone over Ledgeview, you know? Unless they did take down the building and re, completely rebuild it, but that seems very unlikely.
And if they did that, we're up to fifteen units an acre already at thirteen. So we don't, the impact is. To your point, is kind of, kind of minor. I don't think anybody would, I don't think it'd drop those buildings to pick up three more units an acre, uh, but.
Seems unlikely. You, you never know what's gonna happen. Um, so that's, I've always been careful about sort of. Choosing a location that we don't think is gonna happen because you have to be careful what you wish for, like, like what if it does happen? You know, long-term, like. But, um. I think Ledgeview is a good option.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Boasi. Mr. English?
Well, if I understood, uh, Rachel correctly, she said Ledge, Ledgeview is seventeen acres. Is that right? So what, you're not gonna gain anything, uh, overlaying Ledgeville, Ledgeview, you still need three more acres. So, um, I'm not sure that it would pass the. Rachel, what was the test called? A compliance test or something to that effect?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
The other site we would choose then would have to be five acres someplace in town. Cause you need, you can't go less than five acre parcels, if I remember correctly, Rachel.
Correct.
So you do seventeen acres here, you do another five acre, five acre parcel someplace in town.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think we can get to twenty acres in Ledgeview, can we not? It, the whole area is at least thirty acres, but. It depends if you're just talking about the buildings or the whole commercial area too.
So I was just giving you this, the acreage of forty Ledgeview, which includes three apartment buildings at two hundred and twenty units in total. That's the only acreage that I gave you. If you want to include more. Like this, um, assisted living. What's that one? That's thirty Ledgeview. That is, ba, 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 four, four acres. And then there's a vacant piece of property at the front. I think that's small too. Um, ba, 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 let's see, that's two point seven acres.
And we still have all our setbacks and everything else. So if you're, if they're gonna develop that piece of property at the front, they're gonna have to set back from the road that's already been installed, which probably. By the time you get a setback from the rear of the lot and a setback from the road, there's probably about thirty feet you could put your building in. Which would be an interesting architectural challenge, but I don't know. It's actually likely to happen, but we should definitely include that acreage if we're gonna go that way.
So let's, let's go back to Mr. English. Your, your question was it doesn't help us. I wanna, I wanna.
That's mine.
Because it could be another five acre parcel or Rachel, question, can you extend another three acres within Ledgeview that's not in that? Just go to the next parcel and take three more acres. And say that there is a twenty acre parcel. Some of it's commercial or some of it's. I'm not sure what's up there.
If we just included. The, the assisted living, in addition to the apartments, we'd get over twenty. That's, I think is what Rachel was just saying. Which is, Ledgeview is four acres. Forty Ledgeview is seventeen, that's twenty-one.
Which comes to three hundred and fifteen, um, potential units. There's already two hundred and twenty, so the most you're ever going to get down there is ninety-five more units and that's, that would require tearing down. One of the most valuable, uh, entities in the town, which is a senior, uh, assisted living facility.
Yeah.
How many units are in the assisted living?
I, I, I don't know, but it also doesn't really, the overlay sits on top of the underlying zoning.
That's true.
So it's not, it's, the two don't cross. They float.
Right. And the assisted living is a memory unit if memory serves.
They also have a memory care unit.
Okay.
That's not.
I just did a rough calculation. It's about twenty-four acres, all three of those parcels.
So do that, do that and Elysium Street, we've still got our fifty.
Would you, would you just include the developed land, not the undeveloped land? Don't put ourselves in a position to have then something happen on a vacant parcel that we wouldn't necessarily want.
Vacant parcels, what, two acres?
Yeah.
So.
That's thirty units, if they could make it work.
Thirty units, thirty, thirty units max.
Only if we needed to make the acreage.
Yeah, right. That's what I'm saying. Go back, get to fifty and call it.
Yeah, or the other possibility would be looking at expanding, um, Elysium Street. By four acres or three acres, whatever we need them to get to the total fifty.
Hmm.
Well, what if somebody buys the, um, gravel pit? And builds out on that? What, in this hypothetical world, Jim?
Yeah.
If somebody were to buy the gravel pit, they can develop it tomorrow.
Right, well, that was always, that, that was always the case as we considered it. But I think part of what we thought was you kind of have to line down a gravel pit and build it or whatever it is, it would take some time, but. Isn't that kind of the way the thinking went? Uh, Chuck and, and Mike?
Yep. And, and the impact on roads, because you already got trucks there, so you'd have less traffic, you know, but the trucks wouldn't be there. It'd be a lot to take it down. And build and be able to build something that. A, if it was running, I don't know how anybody would get the permits to get that with the noise and the dust and the dirt and everything else. So that was, that was it, that was the thinking. I have talked to some people in town. Who know that pit better than I do certainly, and apparently that feeds bir, bird, um. Roof shingles and building materials in Norwood, I believe, that manufacturing facility and it's, uh. The people I've talked to said that, that's, uh, it's owned by a French company, um.
Saint Cobain.
Yep, and it's, uh. Uh, there's no indication, uh, that that's, that's gonna slow down. Now, of course, could it happen? Sure, it could happen, but. Less likely than other sites, uh, as we, as we think about East Street and the things that I was thinking would be impediments. East Street. Now that I'm looking at it again, may be much easier to build than I was anticipating. So, but I, but I don't think Elysium is, I think Elysium is still a. A high hurdle to get. Get something built there. Uh, so Mr. English, we're going down comments. Did you have any more thoughts?
Uh, no, I mean, I just repeat what I had said a few times before. No matter where this goes, somebody's gonna be unhappy. And it's just part of the deal. Uh, as an overlay district, we're just trying to be compliant. Uh, with the MBTA bylaw. But it's like drinking castor oil because you had a little cough, you know? I don't know, it's really gonna be there and it's not gonna taste very good. So those are my thoughts.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Maloney?
A new joke in the castor oil category. Running a long time for that.
We're kind of focused on the forty B at Ledgeview, if that is an option you'd be interested in.
It would, I mean, we, we, we supported East Street because, because of its proximity at the other end of the town from Elysium Street along, you know, one forty and there's gonna be a major development in the middle of town and they're spaced out well enough that the. You know, that we might be able to live with it. Um, a couple of developments still regarding East Street tonight. I see that the owner of the property, one of the owners is, is with us, but I think that property now is back in chapter sixty-one B, which means. If the developer comes along and seeks to purchase the property, uh, and a contract is formed, the town would have the right of first refusal. Um, so, so the. For whatever it's worth, there's that. Also, if East Street ever does get developed, it probably would be more consonant with the surrounding area to be single family homes. Than apartments when you look at Wisteria and Wilkinson Way and, um, and, uh, what exists on Route one forty. So I, I liked East Street. Um, when we brought it to town meeting, but if, if, uh, if we are gonna go anywhere else, I think the reasoning for Ledgeview was pretty good. It's seventeen acres at thirteen units an acre. So you're gonna get. No more than thirty-four units on, on the acreage that's there plus. If you, you know, add, you've got to add your three other acres at fifteen, forty-five and thirty, so. Going to get about eighty, probably no more than eighty units ever. Down there, if you take, uh, if you carve out three more acres. So I can see the point. This is what Dedham did. This is what a lot of places did. They, they. They laid that district over places where they're not gonna get much development because it's already done.
Yeah, also I will say Dedham, um, they're a commuter rail community. They're, they were required to create, um, a zoning district for one thousand five hundred and sixty-nine. And they have to have fifty percent of their, um, zoning within, um, a half mile of the train station.
Yeah, yeah. So, but, yeah, they, they had no choice. And so.
Yeah.
It's the same, sort of the same principle. I mean, I know two members of the planning board and that's. Their reasoning was much like what we are going through now. Regarding already built up areas. So I, I, I could live with it.
Thank you. Mr. Orban. Uh, you're on mute.
You know, as many Zooms I think I've been on, I think that might be the first time that I have fallen down that, uh, that hole. So I apologize and, you know, it was bound to happen eventually. Um, I, I like everybody, like some other comments, I would be generally okay with, with the Ledgeview idea. Um, especially if we can find a way to get the, um, the additional three acres and, and put it in there. So we're not. I mean, I guess if we have to relocate and pick another spot, it's what we have to do, but I, I'd prefer to keep it to the, to two areas if possible. I think like many others have mentioned, it wouldn't, the maximum development wouldn't be that huge of a hit there because there already is so much. And even. You know, and I don't know what this does, but even if somebody did tear it all down and we went from twenty-five percent affordable to ten, I think it's like thirty homes in, in terms of the total difference and. I'm not sure how, how great of an impact or I know it would be ideal, but I don't think would bring us below any, any requirements, um. If the unlikely event would happen, um, but it's just a guess, but it's thirty homes. It's not overwhelming. The twenty-five to ten percent. And if my math is correct, which. I, I don't profess to be a mathematician by, by any stretch of the imagination, but I just did a, a quick rough number on twenty-five percent. Of the two hundred and so versus ten percent and, and figured it that way.
Okay, thank you. Rachel, can we put the ten percent in our bylaw or is that a state requirement?
We put it in the bylaw. It was, it was optional to include. They didn't require it.
Could we up that?
If we do a feasibility, if we do a feasibility impact analysis, yes, we can.
Because if we up the amount, it helps us keep the affordability component in play.
Correct. We would have to do a study to show the state that we need, um. It at a higher amount because of. Factors. A few communities have done that.
Yeah, because this, this is, this is not an affordable housing initiative.
It's not. It's, it's not big A affordable, which is deed restricted affordable. It's little A affordable, which is just affordable at different ranges.
Yeah. Okay.
And I was looking at it just to protect our ten percent. If we did it over a forty B and we had a risk of losing some of that and we. In our proposal said it's fifteen percent, not ten, that shortens that differential potentially.
In terms of Mr. Orban's math though, what, what you're talking about then Norm is not any additional units. You're talking about the transition of thirty-three units from non-affordable to affordable.
Yeah, but, yeah. I'm just looking at it as, as say right now, we need to have X, Y, and Z. In the end, the grand scheme of losing the affordability percentage on the whole town would be, it would basically be go, like going from fifty to twenty. Or something to that extent, which I question. How big of an impact on the overall percentage? Thirty, uh, which I think is roughly the number of affordable homes we would lose. Under the circumstance, I just don't know if, if the loss of thirty home, Rachel might know.
So in forty B. When you have an affordable project and you provide at least twenty-five percent of them as affordable. You get to count all two hundred and twenty units towards your SHI. So it's not just thirty units.
So it's a much bigger number.
Yeah.
Like two hundred?
Yes, two hundred and, yeah, exactly. Yes.
So the, the question then is Rachel, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I know we're bouncing around a little bit and.
Go ahead.
The question would then be, can a, can the manager of a property or the owner of a property seek, uh. A, uh, a, a different definition of his, of his project? He's saying, I, I no longer want to be a forty B. I want to be an MBT community this project.
It's a deed restriction, so they'd have to get, you know, I think approval from what Lisa had told us at the time. It would be approval from the state as well as a change to the deed. So because EO HLC or formerly known as DHCD is the one that approves the, the financing mechanism for those. And so they'd have to get approval from EO HLC. On that as well as a deed restrict, remove that deed restriction. I've never heard of it being done, in other words.
Doesn't sound likely.
But I mean, you know, I don't know, it's.
So.
This person, this friend that you know, Jim.
Can I go down that path a little bit, a little bit more and say, if we did MBTA overlay over Ledgeview? Could they then go and seek? The overlay bylaw for that?
They would have, they would lose their forty B designation.
Understood, but if they lose.
Or they could go for another forty B.
Can't they rent, uh, their properties for more money and make more money?
Then pick up thirty-three more affordable units.
That's my point is they may turn it into something that's more affordable than what they have today.
I mean, I, I love that we're, we're looking into this, uh, magic eight ball or this crystal ball. You're out what people are gonna do.
Well, we're trying to figure out.
I know, it's, I mean, there's so many.
Bad decision.
No, I get that. There's a lot of hypotheticals, you know, on this.
Yes, there are.
Yeah.
We have to deal with because until we have a specific project with a specific developer.
Which we're not gonna have until you zone it.
Under a bylaw in a zone that we have in the town, it's all hypothetical.
Right.
Well, and the worst thing we could do is say, oh, that's the best place ever, put it over there and then find out we didn't do our due diligence on what could happen. That's the worst we could do. That we'd be. Somebody could make, uh, make more money and a better project and have, have us lose out on our affordability.
By simply getting a deed restriction moved. By simply getting a deed restriction moved.
Well, they also have to get it removed from EO HLC too.
Yeah, they would.
There's two things. There's a state process and there's this process and I've never heard of it being done. I'll Google it though.
Well, this is uncharted waters anyway, so.
Right.
That's where lawsuits come from, right? Uncharted. People testing the limits. Mister, I see who are we, who are we uh, talking with? Mister Orbin, were you? Still?
Now, I think that was, I was essentially done, so we can, we can move on from me.
Mr. Woodhills.
Yeah, my uh, actually Rachel just answered my question. My, that was my understanding was that we were getting credit for the all two hundred and twenty units. The ten percent is what the town. Needs to maintain. In order for them to be considered. Forty B compliant, twenty-five percent of their units need to be affordable. The other seventy-five can be market rate, but we get credit for the whole. Two twenty. So if that suddenly goes away. And they build. Fifteen units per acre on seventeen acres, we do lose that component. I don't, I.
It'd be hard pressed to, okay.
I, I just don't, I, I, I don't, I don't see it as being very likely to happen. Um. And so. I have absolutely no problem with putting it down there. My, you know, the, either there or. Or Eaglebrook, do you know? Um, sorry, Rachel, I'm gonna have to test your, your knowledge. How many units are at? Eaglebrook, not just the forty B section of the entire. Like if we were to overlay the entire thing.
I know on the rental side, the one that they just did at Five Eagle Brook, that's a hundred um, units. I'd have to go, let me go back to my, off the top of my head, I don't know, but I have it written down. So let me just find that. And that's the one that's being developed right now. Um, just behind Stonewall Boulevard or will connect into Stonewall Boulevard.
Right.
I'm just thinking about this, if we put an overlay, somebody changes their designation. I don't, I can't account, I can't comprehend how somebody could get a permit without us being involved, which is the forty B process, right? They go and do their thing and.
Correct, yeah.
And then somebody saying, well, we can get rid of that because we're gonna now designate this under the new MBTA bylaw. That doesn't make. Sense that that could happen.
From the five minutes that I've been able to research, it looks like it's the deed. It's the state and now it also includes your local ZBA because they're the ones that approve and um, the comprehensive permit. So now there's three people involved.
Well, the state.
Tricky now, getting really tricky.
The state wouldn't be my ally on that because they like the forty B option. I don't feel like that better than forty B, but MBTA. They, they love. So I don't know that they're our ally in, in that decision, but. If the ZBA is a decision-making point, then that would be good.
Yeah, my, my head, my, my recollection uh. Mr. Chair of, of the deliberations that we have both as a subcommittee and as a, you know. Is we, we didn't know about the ten, the uh, whether we would lose the. Forty B if we decided to put the uh, MBTA overlay over it. And that was. That was my reason for not wanting to do it. Now that we know that that's not an issue, I say put it there. Absolutely. Um, I'm fine with it being over Ledge View. I'm fine with it being over. Uh, Eaglebrook. Whether combination of one or both of those along with keeping Elysium. I, I think is um. Is probably a best case scenario for us. And, and certainly easier than trying to parse out. You know, five or six more. Parcels of five, between five and ten units. I, 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 I would have absolutely no problem with, with shifting. Those areas to there.
Thank you. I think my, I, I would, I'm, I'm on that path. I just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence. We talked about that end of town and the Gillette T-stop and the traffic at that end of town. I still like that concept. I do think though that being on one at Madison Street, that's another, pick a. Pick a mi- number of miles, five miles. Between East Street and where we would be with Ledge View. So I think that is still kind of fits that smell test of, one can handle the traffic. It's closer, it's close to a T station. It's not closer than East Street, but it's close to a T station, which would still be up at Gillette.
About four miles. Cause I'm, I'm, I'm on Madison. I'm right up the street and I'm, I'm, I'm. Four miles from my, pretty much four miles from my house to the stadium as the crow flies, so.
And the, the impact is already there, so it's.
It's already there, exactly.
So the, to me, just thinking through the guiding principle, it fits at least my smell test of, okay, so it's not East Street. It's four miles further down the road. But it's on a road network that can handle. Traffic and four ninety-five is right there. And a lot of people have commented on why aren't we over by one? The end of uh, the village out, by the outlets, because four ninety-five is there and that's how people are gonna get to T stations and to others. So being closer to a highway. And close to a T station and on a road that can handle the traffic feels. Right to me. And I do like the idea that it's. It's, you know, we could put the twenty acres in there without having a major impact. Um. It. Might be a good compromise to get away from East Street. Um, you mentioned, Mr. Maloney, that, you know, it's this chapter sixty-one. I've. I think the commentary I've read and heard is that, that is this generation who owns that land. The next generation. Could take that sixty. When chapter sixty-one off and might want the money in this, and that land could turn into a development very quickly depending on. How, how the generations treat uh, what is a beautiful piece of property and maybe different next time, so.
That is true. Yeah.
I don't think the chapter sixty-one is gonna be a real deterrent to builders because the, the property out on West Street that's being looked at now for purchase by the town. The sixty-one and I don't, I don't think the developer even batted an eye at the thought of having to pay the back taxes. Because there's, there's so much more that could be generated from it. I, I don't, I don't see. That part of it as being a deterrent to development, so.
It's the right of first refusal.
Right, but you know what? I, I.
If you could afford it.
Based, based on the fact that the town is now looking at basically spending every. Penny that the CPC is, is gonna have, you know, the CPA funds for the next. Anywhere between ten and twenty years. There's not much chance that the town would be able to make a reasonable bid on the East Street property if it came up available. And it's just the, the nature of the beast. We just don't have the funds for it. Potentially don't have the funds for it.
Mr. Chairman, one other thing that I'll.
Yes.
I, I know Michelle Rouse reminds me too that there's about seven hundred and fifty, I think. Maybe the number's high, but units going in and that, sort of that end of Franklin too. So you, if you, if you were gonna take Elysium and Eaglebrook. You really might be stacking things up on Route one forty. For, for a while.
Yep. I guess maybe just go back down the list of board members. How good do you feel about Elysium Street as we had? Proposed it and do you have any concerns with that? Uh, Mr. Bowashi?
No change. I'm fine with it like I originally was.
Uh, Mr. English?
I'm fine with Elysium Street. Um. You know, we beat this horse into the ground and we exhaustively evaluated all of these sites. I, close to twenty, I think. These were the two that we settled on as. Probably best meeting the requirement. Uh, proximity to the Franklin Station, proximity to the Foxborough Station. So it doesn't, I mean, Foxborough. End of it doesn't have anything to do with Elysium, but uh, I'm fine with Elysium Street as we presented it.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Um, same, and. I guess I'm, I'm not so persuaded with, well, Franklin's putting in X, Y, Z as I wasn't so persuaded with, well, Foxborough's putting in X, Y, Z and Norfolk's putting in X, Y, Z. I don't think we can. Say, oh, well, another town is doing something, so we can't do the thing that we want to do because, you know, I just, I, I, I think there's a limit to how far that reasoning. Really should restrict us. Um. And I've already said earlier in the meeting, my reasoning for feeling like I, I, I don't see any reason to change our recommendation on Elysium Street.
Great, thank you, Mr. Maloney.
Keep Elysium Street.
Mr. Orbin?
Yeah, I, I still stick with uh, the Elysium Street is a good choice.
Mr. Woodhills?
Yep, I agree. Elysium Street, I, I. I'm fine with it as is.
Yeah. Okay, um, I might suggest we'll get some comments from the public, but maybe we table this and think about it between now and the next meeting and. See if there's anything new that, that pops up that says. You know, just for me, knowing that we can put it over forty B is new information to me that I didn't, either didn't know or didn't have or didn't, didn't absorb. That changes my, my thought process on East Street versus um. Ledge View. Um. But I think making sure that there isn't some gotcha in there and let's deliberate that or, or understand it. Make sure, maybe Rachel can do some more research on it just to make sure that we're, if we're gonna vote to go on top of Ledge View. Uh, that it's a sound decision without a. Without a gap that we haven't understood.
Yeah, I asked, I did ask um, legal opinion for it, so it wasn't just me.
Yep.
Coming up on something.
Just keep asking what ifs and by the time you get done with all of the what ifs, Rachel, we'll have the answer, so. All right, public comment.
One more, what if?
There's always one more what if.
We'll, we'll never be done with the what ifs.
I know you guys well enough by now.
Hey, we got to a decision last time. We have new information. We're gonna, we're gonna modify a decision maybe. So uh, public opinions, does anybody have any new information to share with us? As we said, you've supported. Your comments from the last meeting with a lot of good information that's in the record now because it's posted, I believe, Rachel, just to validate for people that if they've sent a letter, it is in the record.
Yes, I know there's been a couple of notes from Jay as we were talking, um, and I let him. Read them in the chat. Or let him say them.
Okay. Um, so we'll open it up for public comment. If you've already stated something, an opinion or a question, we have that, we understand it. If there's something new, we'd love to hear your thoughts on it.
Um, Jay Brooks has his hand up and as I said, he was sending chats, but I wasn't able to reply.
Okay. Name and address for the record, please, Mr. Brooks.
So Jay Brooks, uh, twenty Wisteria Way in Rentham. And uh, so Mr. Chairman, I'll. Try not to repeat anything. I'll try to make it very quick, but uh, number one, I'll just tell you, I mean, I. I'm not as much a fan of Elysium as you apparently are, as the, as the board seems to be. I do like, I do. Wish you'd reconsider Eaglebrook on the other side, but uh, I'll leave it at that. Um, the other thing I wanted to just add or two other things is. To get to Ledge View, uh, looking at Norfolk, it looks as though Norfolk had taken in order to get to contiguous lots. Um, if I interpreted their map properly, they ended up zoning a big. Uh, piece of property down near their town. And then. In order to get contiguous, they included a lot of things, but then there was some property that they excluded from that. So if you can imagine, I think they zoned in sixty acres. That were MBT overlay, ten acres or some were taken out of it. So I bring that up only as when you look at Ledge View. Right? If there's a way to uh, increase the property in the zoning. In order to pick up other lots that might be suitable. So like if you took Ledge View, you went up Route one. You picked up what I'm gonna call a market basket property there on the corner Madison and, and Route one. Um, and you went up to the hotel, you could zone that whole thing is potentially zone it all as MBTA, but then exclude. Uh, property that you don't want to have developed. And that way you can kind of pick up a larger piece of property, get the acreage, but then protect the property that you don't want. And a- along that line, uh, I'd like, I'd, I'd like you to consider, I don't know if it's allowed or not, but. If you could exclude the two hundred and twenty properties, the two hundred and twenty apartments that are forty B. From the zoning, you know, maybe that's a way that you can pick up the zoning for the Ledge View area. But then protect the forty B for the building itself. And.
You might have to run that one by. Counsel.
Yeah, I just, just the thought, right? If you're concerned about losing all that forty B, zone the whole thing. I don't know if there's a way that you can exclude that building to protect the forty B. But then leave the rest of it for the MBTA.
What I'm looking at, so the excluded land. For Norfolk, isn't that not their town building?
Yes.
And their water tower?
And their fire department, yeah.
Yeah, so publicly land, publicly owned land is tech, is considered um, excluded land by the state's definition. And so you can't include it. And so if, if, if that's what I'm. But you're saying there's an apartment that they excluded? From this?
No, I'm saying if there's a way that we could exclude the two hundred and twenty apartments.
Yeah, not unless it's publicly owned. You know, like it's a, it's a town-owned property.
Can you carve out that property from the, the overlay map?
Then we can't take credit for those, that acreage, whatever that accounts for.
Right, but then that would be where I would say, okay, can you extend down Route one? To pick up some property. You know, I'm, I'm just trying to think inside the box and try to get. The acreage that apparently you need if you exclude the two hundred and twenty apartments that are forty B.
Rachel, does the twenty acres have to be contiguous that we're talking about at Ledge View?
Um. So you have to have at least one of them, one of your zones has to be twenty-five acres contiguous. And then you can have any other number of them. Smaller, so long as you have one that's twenty-five acres contiguous.
Elysiums are already over twenty-five, right?
I'm sorry? So if you have, if you want to separate this into multiple districts. At least one of them has to be twenty-five acres contiguous. And then you can have the rest of them all five acre. Lots, or you can have them whatever those number configuration is to, so that way there's fifty acres total.
Do they have to be five acre minimum, the rest of them? Yes, okay. So when you take Ledge View forty B and then you try to take. The assisted living. Is the assisted living isn't five acres by itself and it's not contiguous with the parcel that's forty B. Do they have to be contiguous?
They're right next, well, they're right next to each other, so.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
Why did I think there was something in between?
No, across the street, there's the. Um, storage treatment plant. And then there's the uh, way up in the back, there's, it, there's the Plainville stuff, which is the storage and the. Half hotel, one, one half of that hotel is ours and one half of it is theirs. And then there's the plaza.
Okay, I, I. For some reason, I was thinking there was something in between there. But if that's contiguous and we can get twenty acres, I.
Yeah. And also Jay, also Jay, Norfolk is a commuter rail community, so they have, they're required to. Zone at least forty percent of their required area and district within a half mile of. So they, again, that's, they have to do that.
Different guideline.
Yeah, just, just put, again, we're putting all the information out there. I know some people have mentioned Sherburne. And how did Sherburne get out of it? They didn't. They have to zone for seventy-eight units. In Sherburne.
Right. I guess that was my comments. And then with respect to the contiguous, if you needed to look at an, an alternative to Elysium. Uh, and you looked at Eaglebrook, I don't know whether there's anything there. And I still like the properties out, uh, the armitage. It's just.
You. In your note, Jay, you said something about hotel. Were you saying the one that's the Arbor Inn Hotel or the one that's?
That one.
Okay, yeah. That's a good location. Uh, or I mean, that's a under you flies use, I guess, or I don't know how big that is.
If somebody would tear that down in a second probably and build something. So uh, thank you, Mr. Brooks. Anything?
Nope.
That's only three point eight acres, three point nine acres, so.
Mr. Lawrence?
Uh, just to, just to respond a little bit to Mr. Brooks's idea of going uh, uh, further down Madison and across the street there. Uh, one of our guiding principles, or I don't know if it was our guiding principles, but we did say we want to try not to use. Good and developable business land, business-owned land. And I believe that market basket parcel is that. And we looked at that and we rejected it for that reason. Uh, coming out the back of the Turnpike uh. Auto Center or whatever that is. We, could we definitely, and I know, and I had already expressed my appreciation, Mr. Brooks, for having listened to our deliberation.
and I had already expressed my appreciation, Mister Brooks, for having listened to our deliberations. Um, but we did have that conversation, and I know in our mind, that was why we made that choice not to use that, and it was similar with the armitage property. I do understand, I think we, we had a lot of love for the armitage property in this process. Did we think the potential cleanup kept it from qualifying? Rachel, was it, was that too much of a burden to put on the developer?
Um, I believe that was where the conversation ended, yes.
Okay.
Cause it, it was up, it was in until very much the end of our deliberations on this.
It was like the second to last one, we said, we said no, so we, we liked it too, Jay, is what I'm trying to say, we, you know, we were not, we're not unsympathetic to that as a possibility. Uh, but if we, if we have other things we like better, I guess that's where we'll be at.
Right, I think one of the, one of the things that we had, if I remember, um, Jim and Mike, was with the armitage property, because of the potential burden of cleanup, we were worried that that, including that property, might cause the state to reject it, saying that we were choosing a parcel that would be overly burdensome to be developed, and there's, there's, there's a, there's a, um, a stipulation in the guidelines slash requirements, um, that you can't pick properties, you want to pick, on, you know, underdeveloped properties is fine, but you can't pick a property that's gonna be so burdensome to a developer that they can't feasibly do it, that would cause the state to reject it. So we could go through this whole exercise, get it approved at town meeting and have the state kick it back anyway.
But what we did find out was that while we are reviewing in compliance, or if something is wrong, isn't that correct? That was the meeting that you and, Mike, you and Chris were on, was that while they're determining our compliance, and if anything's wrong, we're not out of compliance, was that not correct on that conversation?
Yeah, but we'd have to go back, we'd still have to go back and correct it, and then go to yet another town meeting vote.
Okay.
I think if, if we didn't have, what we're talking about Ledge View with twenty acres, if we only had sixteen or seventeen, and we needed another parcel of five, armitage would come back up as, should we consider that, I think, is it was, it was, as we said, it was late in the game when we said, let's go with two instead of three. Um, okay, thank you, uh, anything else, Mister Lawrence?
Uh, no, thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Good conversation, um. Let's make sure that, you know, we're doing our due diligence on this idea, I think it has a lot of merit, I think you've all voiced, uh, interest in it, and, um, where we're not in a intermediate hurry, uh, because we don't have to go to a town meeting, uh, until we learn more about these lawsuits and things, um, and say we table it and continue to the next meeting. Um, you know my perspective on it, but I won't here, be here to vote, so I'd, I'd be in favor of, uh, moving off of East Street, uh, to Ledge View, but that's just, uh, one citizen's opinion at the next meeting versus a board member's opinion, so.
You sound so happy about the fact you won't be here to vote.
Good luck, no, I'd love to be here to vote. I'd like to continue MBTA for another, like, couple of years to deliberate, I guess, I know Rachel would, so.
No, I don't, I really, really don't. I mean, our conversations have been amazing, they've been so great.
Scintillating.
Do you want to maybe push it off until maybe like a month, would I say, so to maybe get more information? And also to allow this new member to digest, uh, or new members, I'm really hoping you stay on, Jim, um. But I'll work with whoever's, I'll work with whoever, um. But just enough time for them to digest the information.
When is our first meeting in May, Rachel?
May seventh.
All right, so do you want, Mister Chairman, do you want a motion to continue this hearing to May seventh?
Sure.
So moved.
Second.
And motion, we have a second discussion? Roll call vote, Mister Boassi?
Uh, just point of discussion, I will be not at the meeting on May seventh, I'll be out of the country, but I think that's fine, um. I'm fine with continuing it, so.
You can zoom.
If, for what it's worth, I'll also be out of state and won't be available on the seventh.
Oh, did we want to move it to the next, the meeting after that, the twenty-first?
Well, how would that work for you?
Twenty-first should be fine.
Alfred, how about you?
Yeah, oh, yeah, that'll be fine, and you know, we can also have the discussion and I can listen to the meeting and um, when I'm back, so.
Rachel, this
This, this doesn't require Mullins, right?
Correct.
It does not, no.
Right, so missing a meeting doesn't violate your ability to vote?
No, it's just one of those things, like Mike started this off saying he was the last one to sit down at the meetings. So you may get voluntold to do something or not.
Uh-oh. I'm fine with continuing to the seventh, but I'm just not gonna be here on that particular meeting, so whatever people want to do.
Mister Chairman, if, if you, if we're gonna be missing two members for certain, maybe we should, uh, maybe I should amend the motion to the twenty-first.
It is your motion.
Then, uh, then so moved.
Hey, we have a motion for the meeting to be on May twen, what was it, May?
Twenty-first.
Twenty, yeah, May twenty-first, did we have a second on the motion?
I seconded and I will accept the, uh, amendment.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, we have an amendment, we have a second, any other discussions? Mister Boassi?
Aye.
Mister English?
Aye.
Mister Lawrence?
Hi.
Mister Maloney?
Aye.
Mister Orbin?
Aye.
Mister Woodhams?
Aye.
I, I, seven in favor, no one opposed, motion carries.